Good evening, Daytona Beach. Very happy and excited this evening. Want to welcome each of you to the May 18th, 2022, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. At this time, we would ask Ms. La Magna to review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comment and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment forum, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green forum will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Warrant says reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lecture or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. At this time, we will have the invocation led by Commissioner Reed, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Strickland. Please rise for the invocation and pledge.
This is the day that the Lord has made. I will rejoice and be glad in it. And, Lord, once again, we come before your throne and we say thank you. Thank you for a day that we've never seen, a day that brought sunshine and joy into the lives of some, and yet others may be missing loved ones. But there is joy in knowing that on the other side, there is glory and peace and calm. So we ask that you would comfort those who have lost loved ones, Lord God, be it through the war, be it through military, be it through our police officers, or even with our fire, our first responders. We just lift those up, Lord God. But as we stand here tonight, and we convene as a group to make decisions on behalf of this city, we pray that you would lead us, that you would guide us, that we would be unified in our thought, that we would give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise, because it's not about us, Lord God. It's about what you've called us to do. We give you glory, and in the matchless name of Jesus, I pray. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the April 6th, 2022 city commission meeting and the April 20th, 2022 commission, city commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Traeger. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. At this time, we will hear from our city manager if there are any changes to our agenda. He will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, there are several changes we are going to add to the agenda. We're adding to item 8K. Commissioner Reed will be contributing $400 from Bike Week funds to the Mount Carmel Community Development Group for the Financial Literacy Realty Fair. Add to item 8K. Commissioner May will be contributing $400 from her Bike Week funds to Campbell Middle School for the following field trips, $200 to Ponce Inlet Lighthouse, and $200 to Museum of Arts and Sciences. Item AL, addition city manager's office allocation of coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. Add item 8N, legal department amending resolution number 2022-95 related to authorizing and directing the city attorney to request an advisory legal opinion from the Florida Attorney General. Removing item 8M, city manager's office crime prevention doorbell camera program. However, we're still accepting applications, just bringing clarity. Remove item 10A, legal department pre-suit settlement agreement for special warranty deeds and repeal of right-of-way for the Bridgeport Heights subdivision river approach. Thank you. Oh, have one more. Item AL, thank you. Allocation of coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. We're adding from Commissioner Henry, $3,000 for the Volusia County Sharks and $2,000 for the Daytona Beach Cowboys. Memorandum for these additions are on the dais.
Motion to accept the said changes to the agenda.
Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner Reed, a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have any questions or comments? Who was, oh, it's Cantu. Commissioner Cantu, do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. We have no presentations this evening, so we're going to move on to item number seven. This is citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. My first speaker is Victor Ramos, that's speaking on 8C, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Good day, Mayor Commissioners and City Manager. Thank you for this opportunity. Again, my name is Victor Ramos. I'm from Mid-Florida Housing Partnership. I am the CEO, and I'm here to speak in reference to item 8C, which is the city-owned property surplus. If you've probably know, Mid-Florida's been around for 30 years, and we have a very working, very great working relationship, and we look forward to an opportunity for some of these properties probably to be donated to us so that we can continue providing affordable homeownership here in the city of Daytona, city of Daytona Beach. Thank, apologize. As a Commissioner of City of Daytona, that's what I have in mind. I apologize, but definitely, yes, here in the city of Daytona Beach.
Well, I was thinking he was going to have Daytona give us some of their properties.
Listen, you never know what can happen, right? It's all about building collaboration. But I hope that we can continue to do the great work that we're doing. And in Mid-Florida, it's about a hand up, not a hand out. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
Commissioner/CEO, thank you very much for your work, and I think it's a great, great opportunity for us to support great initiatives. Commissioner Cantu?
I agree. And we had a talk, me and the city manager, about this, too. You did tell him to fill out the application.
Yes, and have no problem filling out the application, hopefully getting the donation aspect of it.
And also, these particular properties are throughout the city, but we also will bring back those in the redevelopment zone. So I'm going to make sure that you talk with Michael Starward in the back so you can know how the process will work, because, yes, the ability to donate also is available as well.
And Mayor, this resolution was revised just yesterday or the day before. All of these acquisitions or sales will come back to the commission for approval. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, speaking on 8C and D.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Yeah, I, too, would like to see the city maintain control of those properties as opportunities for low-income housing. As we've seen far too often in the presentation there a few meetings back by a local group of builders and real estate agents, there's a lot of money to be made in taking these properties and putting what they call affordable housing that really isn't. And I believe the city, if they can keep control of these properties, can probably assess the situation better and get true affordable housing for the citizens here that need it badly. So I concur with what he's saying. I would like to see other opportunities for affordable housing also be presented to the city as well so that they can make the best choice to get the most number of people into affordable housing. Also on item 8D is the maintenance contract, which all sounds fine. My biggest concern with these contracts is who's monitoring them? As I've spent a lot of time in the Lenox Park, which is the only park I have in my area where I can walk my dog, there's quite a bit of damage that has been done by the landscaping group there, including electrical damage, damage to the various lighting fixtures that are there. There's just a tremendous amount of damage that's been done. And I'd like to see that we have a way, a good way of monitoring this and that the contract, I don't have all the words in the contract, of course, but that whoever the vendors are are held responsible for this damage. I know in the past that I've seen the city will eventually come through, use our taxpayer money to fix the damage done by the contractors. I'd just like to ensure that we do have a good viable system of follow-up so that the contractor himself or herself is responsible for the damage that they do. All right? Thank you.
Okay. That was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No.
No.
No. Commissioner Traeger's the motion, the second is Commissioner Reed. No questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. We're going to move on to our public hearings. Item number 9A is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division Victory Temple Special Use Permit. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution authorizing a special use permit for the establishment and operation of a place of worship used at 1047 Madison Avenue in the SFR 5 zoning district in accordance with Sections 3.4.G and 5.2.B.13.E.I. of the Land Development Code and providing an effective date.
Second.
Okay.
Yep, we have a motion from Commissioner May.
Second.
First, motion from Commissioner Traeger, second from Commissioner May.
No, no, it's the other way around.
May and Traeger.
That's what I thought. I thought it was May first, Traeger second.
Yep, and then Traeger second.
Okay.
Mayor Commissioner, good evening. I'm Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. In the course of the time since your last commission meeting till now, I've worked with Pastor Hillary and the church, and we've entered an agreement. Legal Department has supervised the drafting of it. I believe that it addresses your concerns, and I did hear what your concerns were, but Pastor Hillary and I have talked about it. They are agreeable, they're in the audience tonight, and you have assigned executed original from them already. And so from the perspective of the case, I think the issues that you've asked about Mayor and Commission are resolved, and there's documentation to that effect.
Thank you.
And one other thing I should say, they were great people to work with, and no problem at all to get the thing done.
Okay. Thank you.
This is going to be for a church only, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Well, it's the church property, it governs the entire property, and the restriction applies to the entire property, which we thought from a perspective of managing the issue was a more effective way to do it. The church can create additional facilities subject to site plan review, which will come back to city staff to be looked at.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Congratulations on good work, and congratulations to you all. We look forward to a great worship experience for you and your parishioners, and great work in the community. We have a motion, we have a second. Do you have any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Moving on to item 9B, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Caliber Car Wash PD Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 1.12 plus or minus acres of property located at 1111 Bevel Road, which was previously developed as the club member gas station for the former Sam Club store at 1175 Bevel Road. From PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Caliber Car Wash Plan District Agreement, authorizing redevelopment of the property as a retail car wash, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu, second from Commissioner Traeger.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. We'll now move on to item 9C, which is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division Minor Certificate of Appropriateness. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending Section 3.4.J.2.B.I.A. of the City Land Development Code to clarify the types of awnings and canopies that may be administratively approved via minor certificates of appropriateness, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner May, second from Commissioner Cantu.
I don't have any speakers for this item.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
We're going to move on to 9D, which is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division Utilities Pretreatment Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the city's land development code, Section 7.2.P., the city's pretreatment code, and LDC Section 11.5 definitions, to provide pretreatment regulations applicable to dental and pharmaceutical dischargers in accordance with applicable federal and state environmental laws and regulations, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith, and providing directions to the codifier and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May.
And I have no speakers for this item.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Moving on to item 9E, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Addressing Plating Land Development Code Text Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, Section 3.4.K. related to the subdivision plats, and Section 7.2 relating to required infrastructure, modifying existing procedures and standards related to final plat recording, contracts for plat recording, and required subdivision improvements, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May.
And I have no speakers for this item.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. Now move on to item 9F, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Town Center Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use element neighborhood S development policy to revise maximum residential density and non-residential intensity for approximately 7.2-plus acres of property generally located southwest at the intersection of Cornerstone Boulevard and Williamson Boulevard, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Henry.
And I do have Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions, and no other speakers.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
The second public hearing is set for July 20th. Moving on to item 9G, it's a Public Works Technical Services preliminary and final plat, contract for plat recording and license agreement for use of city right-of-way. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for Tamoka North, a commercial subdivision located on the west side of Williamson Boulevard, east of I-95, north of Gateway North Drive, and south of Strickland Range Road, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recording thereupon meeting certain conditions precedent, approving a contract for plat recording for the subdivision, providing construction of public improvements within the subdivision, approving a license agreement providing for installation of certain private improvements within the subdivision right-of-way, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Cantu.
And I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. And item number 10A was removed from our agenda, so that was the last item on our agenda.
All right. We will move on to comments from the commission, and we'll start with Commissioner of Zone 2, Commissioner Ken Strickland.
Oh, wow. Get me started early. I just wanted to thank Mr. Jagger for sending us the information about trees right before the meeting. We'll have a chance to look at that so that we can talk about preserving our trees in our area at the next meeting, hopefully because of need to reduce the clearcutting. I hope everybody sees it that way. Instead of scalping the land like we do some of them, we just clear the whole thing and then start building, plant a few weeds in there and call them trees, and it's not good for the environment, and we need to start taking care of our environment. I have a new saying that our quality of life is priceless, and we need to start taking better care of it. By clearing out everything, not keeping as much green space as we can, we're not being very good stewards of what we're sitting up here. There was a couple of other things. I think I had talked to the city manager about the three ugly piles of dirt over on the property, our property on East ISB. Do you have an update on those three ugly piles of dirt, sir?
The update is that staff will be working on them.
Staff is working on them. Okay. That's probably enough out of me tonight.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Juanita May.
Good evening, everybody. So I've been spending quite a bit of time in Zone 3 west of Ridgewood, and the residents there are fantastic people. They're looking forward to the ring program. I have many, many seniors there, and I really would like to know, I'm looking forward to any ideas that I can work with Public Works and Mr. Ken Thomas, our newest member, on any kind of beautification projects that we can come up with. Also, for me, the speed in those areas, it's a lot. It's just a lot. That's the best way I can put it. Now, maybe it's me, and maybe I like to move at a slower pace. And so when I see the cars speeding by, or you're trying to stop, it's just, it was pretty incredible. It's pretty incredible. So my question is, I know that we're working on speed bumps. That might not be the answer. I was looking at speed tables. I was looking at changing how people park. I was researching what you can possibly do to slow down traffic. I'm not sure what there is, I'm not sure what we can do about it, right? So city manager and I were speaking, and you said that, could you just give us some information about some of the speed tests you're running, and kind of what you found out about the speeding? Because remember, it's my idea of what is speed, and my idea might not be matching. A resident's idea of speeding might not be matching up to what is really qualified as speeding in certain areas.
One of the things that the mayor has had the police chief in our Public Works here...
They are doing assessments relative to speeding within the neighborhoods, but also they may be, oh, they're going to chief, I'm glad.
Yeah. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Can you finish my speech?
I can finish your speech. Jakari Young, Chief of Police, with regards specifically to Phoenix Avenue, we've been running operations since Sunday, and we are not seeing that speed that you're referring to. We ran an operation, matter of fact, just today where the top speed was 23 miles per hour, and that was actually a person on a bicycle. So we're down there, we're looking at it, that's a very narrow street, so we have speeds of 18 miles per hour, 12 miles per hour, 14 miles per hour, and I'm asking the officers, I said, are you sitting someplace off to where they can't see you? Because I want to make sure, just to play devil's advocate, I want to make sure it's not a situation where they see us and they're slowing down because they see us. There's not a lot of hiding places over there on Phoenix Avenue, but they're doing their best to tuck in so that we can get a true depiction of what's happening on Phoenix Avenue.
Sure.
So I'm going to, we're going to continue to monitor it because we're also working operations in Zone 5, because we're getting the same speeding complaints in Zone 5. So I was going to wait till the end of the meeting just to kind of go over a few things, but we actually have a meeting tomorrow at approximately 2:00. I'm meeting with all command staff because I want to come up with a citywide initiative to do just that, to try to slow the city down, because speeding is the number-one complaint that I've received since taking over as police chief. You would think it might be other things, but it's actually the speeding. So we're aware of it, and we're putting our heads together to put a plan in place to address speeding citywide.
I really appreciate that. So when I was on Washington, let's say, there's a speed bump there, and this is why I sat back and I just watched it. There's a speed bump there, people actually speed up to the speed bump, go over the speed bump, and then accelerate, right? Or they're going up and down North Street, things like that. But apparently, in the North Street area, the residents are saying things have improved in general in that particular area. So thank you so much for that. But, you know, I just want that, I would like to be able to go back to things, say, like, this is what they're finding out. They're actually doing the work, they're getting the research, and this is what they found. So I really do appreciate that.
So I'm going to give it a few more days, and then I can actually send you a comprehensive email.
That sounds good.
With all the times we're on Phoenix, all the speeds, because we're really getting ready to ramp up our efforts as best we can to make an impact and try to slow things down, but...
I just appreciate the fact that you're trying to work on a plan. Thank you so much.
Right. But just keep, just keep in mind, when we do address speeding, then it changes. When we address speeding, and now all of a sudden we're enforcing it, then it becomes harassment. So just keep that in mind, because now when we're out there and we're stopping folks, then your phone's still going to ring, but it's going to be, I'm being profiled, I'm being harassed because they're speeding and they're being stopped. But I'm okay with that, and, you know, we're going to just continue to do what we're doing.
And that's, to add to that, that's very true, because I've already gotten the calls that they're harassed, the harassment calls, because you've been in my zone for the past couple days or couple weeks, I think.
Right.
Well, since the last meeting, you've been there, and I've already started getting the calls.
Yeah.
But keep it up, because Zone 5 is full of children, and they're all out in the streets, they're playing, they're playing basketball, and their safety is my main concern, and making sure that those people aren't speeding up and down those roads and possibly hitting one of those children.
Yeah.
So I'll take the complaints. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Zone 4, face the counter.
I don't have a whole lot. The only thing, I do have some great news, and I'm sure city staff is happy, too, so they don't have to hear from me anymore. We do have an FRP going out in the LPGA area for a cell phone tower, and I'm sure two of my constituents are happy about that as well. And that's about it.
Awesome. Commissioner, Zone 5, Danette Henry.
I don't have very much tonight either. Just wanted to thank Chief Young, because as I stated before, they have been out, they've been in the zone, and I actually have seen some improvement in the speeding in the zone even just within the past two weeks. So I know that they've been out there and they've been doing the work. I appreciate that. In the zone, this weekend, we had an asthma awareness walk, which I was able to go out and support. and support. One of our young citizens passed away of asthma two years ago, almost two years, yeah, two years ago and his mom did a big asthma walk in the community. She had information about asthma. If many of you know that asthma is one of the leading causes of deaths for, especially for African-American children because of environment. So I was glad that she was out there in the community, getting the information out to the people and hopefully that's something next year and the next year that we can sponsor. I think the city did some forms of sponsorship, but I would like to see a much bigger crowd next year because that's some information that we do need to get to the public. And one of our schools, the Campbell Spartans, played in the Volusia County championship game on yesterday and it was huge. Great to see so many people come out and support young people and the Campbell Spartans won the Volusia County championship for middle school basketball. So that was exciting to see. And last, the RING cameras are, Zone 5 is, they're going quickly. So if you know someone that would like to participate in the program, please make sure. And I'm finding that a lot of the elderly people don't know how to download the form and they don't know how to email the form. So I've been getting quite a few calls and I've had to go drop some forms off to some elderly people because they just didn't know what to do. So if you know an elderly person and they do want to participate in the program, please help them get the form, help them fill it out and help them email it back to the city. Or drop it off to Monique, yeah, at the city here. So either one. And some of them are, many of them weren't mobile. So a lot of them that I talked to, they weren't mobile, they didn't have transportation. So I didn't figure all that in when I asked about the program, but it's okay. If they need help, you know, they can reach out to me and I'll make sure that they get the form that they need and help them get it back to the city because I want them to be able to participate in the program. That's all my comments for tonight, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Zone 6, Commissioner Paula Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner May and say that Zone 6 has also joined the doorbell campaign. So I need to know what I need to know to tell my people so they can participate because we just joined this week. And I understand that there might be some modifications coming to that as well, all right? But then, you know, my colleagues, tonight I'd like for you to consider something. And this is the last thing I'm going to speak about, so I don't have a litany of things to talk about. But, you know, we are charged to represent the citizens of this city and we are a city that has really been blessed with some really extraordinary people. Wouldn't you agree? I mean, when you think of in July, we're gonna recognize the visionary, the lady, Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, representing our state in statutory hall, that's just one of many people who have come through this city's gates and have blessed us and put us on the map. I mean, you can think of Jackie Robinson, you can think of the Francis bringing the Speedway here, you know, you can just think of how we've just been blessed. And then there's some ordinary people who've done some extraordinary things. And in saying that, the Bible says to give honor where honor is due. And this, and tonight I'd like for you to consider giving some honor where honor is due. A decorated Korean veteran, activist with the local NAACP and president of the state NAACP, served as a Bethune-Cookman College educator and a business manager, a realtor, a newspaper and radio entrepreneur, a city commissioner of my Zone 6. I'm speaking of none other than the renowned Charles Cherry. I'd like for this commission to consider he and his wife and how they contributed to this city, for us to consider naming the Midtown Community Center in honor of the Cherries. Mr. Cherry died in this seat representing this city. He marched as an activist in this city. And I'm not just speaking about what I've heard, I'm speaking about what I know. And several of us can say that we knew the man, all right? I know Midtown has a name that has become very famous to us, per se. And we could consider it the Midtown Complex, but the center itself, I'd like for us to consider naming it the Julia T. and Charles W. Cherry Senior Center. So I'm going to ask if you don't mind, that the manager would come back with the resolution for us to consider reviewing this, this request. Are there any, it doesn't require a motion, I'm just asking for us to say, yes, we would consider the manager coming back with the resolution for it.
Absolutely, yes. And the reason is that we all received a package of information. It's not just about Mr. Charles Cherry Senior, it's also about his wife. And I was really impressed with everything I had to say about her being a delta and being involved in the community. So as a team, they worked really well together for the benefit of the community. And I will give you a personal story. The story goes like this, that after speaking to one of their children, I think Ms. Cassandra's here as well, but Cassandra Cherry. So one of his last dying thoughts was about Daytona Beach. That was one of the last conversations he had, it meant that much to him. But in the articles we received, you know, Mr. Cherry said that it was thanks to the support of his wife and all of her good work as well, did not leave her out and the support of the family, so much happened in Daytona Beach. So many people know the name Cherry, not just Charles Cherry, but also Julia T. Cherry. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome. And I thought that as well. You know, there aren't many cities that can say things that we can say about great people that have walked through these streets and having made a difference. You wanted to say something, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I want to say first, I like the idea of maintaining the complex as a, because the name, the Midtown Center, has become a major name in the community. I don't think that anyone could say anything other than the sentiments that you've echoed about the Cherries, both are, I mean, the core of our city is deeply indebted to them for just a million reasons.
Indeed.
I can't, you know, and it's not just the newspaper, but his and her, their activism. And I think that when, if and when, which I fully expect because it will certainly have my personal support.
Thank you.
So long as the community doesn't come in and overwhelmingly say something different, but I couldn't imagine that being the case and that's a part of why you have a public hearing. But I can't imagine anything other than that. And I want to go into something a little different because it's a part of, I had a conversation today, you remember earlier, I talked about having an African-American history museum. But I think that they're integral to that history.
Indeed.
The newspaper itself, and I have asked Charles Cherry
To?
To, to, to join me and a few other people as we try to build a facility or repurpose a facility, in part because I think that what they did with the newspaper has chronicled so much of the history of Daytona Beach and African-American history in particular. And so I think that the Cherry's story is integral to that facility and I, I mean, it has my, when I read the, received the packet, I had no doubt that I would support it. So with that being said, if there's no opposition, we will await you bringing something back. And I think that, because when you get these naming of facilities, and I've had a few, but I do want to allow the community an opportunity to hear, but I think that the way that it's purposed is perfect. Because one, it allows, you know, it's just kind of like Scarlet Golden Center. You've got a facility that pays homage to two people who have touched almost all of the areas of our city.
Yes.
So I look forward to it and I look forward to it being successful.
Yes. And I was thinking complex because one, we do recognize the Midtown name.
Yeah.
But we also have our aquatic center there, you have the Cypress Park and the walking. So when you put all that together, it's the Midtown Complex, but this center would be named after Charles and Julia, Julia and Charles Cherry.
Yeah. Do we have any opposition to that? Okay. And is that building in Zone 6?
Yes, sir. And he was this commissioner, he died in this seat for Zone 6. My predecessor is who he named to be in this seat.
Correct, okay. Yeah, all right, well then I look forward to having it returned to us. And then when we rename it, we can fully educate and celebrate the community in terms of what he accomplished. Because I think, you know, and I'm looking forward to getting the museum because we've just got too much history, we've got to illustrate it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a note on that also. I think Tier T. Small is gonna dedicate
They are.
A building to us, yes, so that we can have.
They are, but that's not gonna be, that's not gonna be the same.
Want something else? Okay, very good.
And so...
The more, the better.
Something that's, that's...
Different.
Okay. I'm for that too.
People can be nationally, we can be Daytona proud
Yes.
Of it. It's not, you know...
So, Mr. Mayor, your vision is to have some memorabilia there as well from the Cherries, from the newspapers, is that what you're thinking, some of their history and their, not personal, but city archives things?
Well, it could, that's for the committee to sort of decide, you know, but my feeling is that this would be a facility that children in Daytona Beach can go through to learn about Daytona Beach and our contribution to American history. And all of, and so they have a lot of the memorabilia there and I don't know how they've archived that, but it is possible that we would be able to use that as a catalyst. I want us to be able to show documentaries because there are many documentaries about our history. And we need to have a space for those documentaries, but also a space that tells the total story. So it's, it's not all for me to decide, but it is, you know, something that I'm fully committed to, to leading and helping to bring to fruition.
I went to the, I went to Kansas City, I think it was the Negro Baseball League of Fame, I think is what it was. I went there and they could sit in a room and they would just show you footage over and over again of the different history and it would play like every 15 minutes. I really enjoyed just sitting there and just watching it. It was, it was interesting. So that thought process ties in nicely with what we're planning for the future.
Okay, yeah. All right, do we have, we don't have to have a motion, we'll just have it come back before us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you bringing that up. And Commissioner, Zone 1?
I am so glad that you also recognized the contributions of Mrs. Julia Cherry. She was an amazing woman and gracious, very, very gracious.
Good word.
And where the newspaper, you generally think they're hard-boiled people, she was anything but. So I'm very happy that you are recognizing both of them, including Julia. I'm glad that we also recognized our fallen heroes in a memorial service yesterday. It was moving and it was kind of heart-wrenching for me because I knew so many of them that had passed on doing the work for us and for Daytona Beach. Commissioner Cantu was there with me and we represented the city good, I think. This morning was at a score breakfast. Now, for all our up-and-coming entrepreneurs, if you need help, go to score. They have mentors to help you, they have different programs. Hey, the more the merrier the entrepreneurs we have, right? And I am also glad that you are planning on maybe having a special meeting to discuss that Bridgeport situation. Many, in fact, most of the residents there would dearly love to be able to give us their input. So I look forward to probably having that scheduled very soon. And that's all I've got to say.
All right. Okay, that concludes our commission's comments and my comments are simple. I see that we have a larger audience than normal, but I would simply say to Daytona Beach that we are, continue to be honored to serve and I am always delighted to listen. On occasion, I like to remind residents of what my phone number is. It's 386-405-4070. And I'm always available to listen to you and what you believe our city needs. It's the honor of a lifetime, I say this daily in my prayer, to serve the community in which I was born. So with that said, Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Yep, just a couple of items. I do want to say that Keith Willis and his team are looking at making sure that we have markers in all of our parks, that we have facilities named after, that people can tell, read the story of many of these individuals. So as you talk about the Cherries, we've been looking at how do we put those items in our parks as well. So you'll be seeing something that gives history about many of the parks that you all have named in the past here as historical markers. I sent you all some dates for a retreat. I'll be sending out a doodle, which is where you can vote on what's your most appropriate date for a retreat coming out. So I wanted to just make sure you had those emails. And one of the things I wanted to hand out to each one of you all, we give out a lot of money to our, to nonprofits and organizations in the group and we're creating a donation and grant form that tells us a little bit about the organization. So I wanted you all to review this because we give a lot of money and some commissioners have asked what goes along, what people do with those funds. And so we're creating a document that will help us to understand who they're getting funds from, how we can contribute, making sure that the funds are used in our community because you all have been very benevolent as a city and as commissioners to make sure that those nonprofit organizations in our area are getting the funds. But we want to know what they're using the funds of because we continue to give them. So this is just a draft. I will say this is something I have done in other municipalities and so I think this will help us to determine what funds are being used, how they're being used and what organizations are contributing to. So look at this and we'll bring, if you have any comments or questions on the document, send them back to us because we'll bring them forward to you all to approve as we go forward giving out funds.
I think it's a great idea, actually. It's for them.
And it will be, it'll be a digital one so people can fill out online. What we're gonna have to figure out is how we rank them so you all can approve the funds in each budget year. We don't want to put the burden on people this year because they're gonna be just getting this. So we're looking at the same funds in the past, but going forward, this will be a document that you all will receive. We're gonna ask the ones we give money to this year, though, to go ahead and fill it out. But we're gonna have to determine how we vote, the criteria, we have point systems that we've added to them. But once I get feedback from you all, we'll bring this too because I want you all to approve the document because you are the ones that authorize the funds to be given out.
All right, good deal.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing further.
All right, at this time, we will hear from the greatest citizens in the United States, the citizens of Daytona Beach.
Okay. Our first speaker is Kiana Griffin and on deck is Charlie Dimer.
Oh, my girl.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kiana Griffin. I'm the CEO and founder of the Levi Long Sickle Cell Association and I want to say thank you so much for believing in me and supporting me. I'm here before you today to ask you all to allow June 19th, which is World Sickle Cell Day, to start this year as an annual celebration in coherent with the Juneteenth celebration. It will be on the Sunday after Juneteenth. I am partnered with Bethune-Cookman University as well as the Department of Health. We will be having a meeting where we have already received a sickle cell grant and we will receive it each year and we will be using funds to allocate for this awesome celebration. I'm looking to reach out to those in the state of Florida that are over sickle cell, CBOs, which are community-based organizations in which I am one as well. And I know that they're excited to come. We will have a big day in the park. I'm also wanting to include the different local community organizations, churches, health organizations in this, starting this year. So I'm asking you all that it would be a grand day that you all allow this to go on.
So you want a proclamation?
Yes, sir.
You get the proclamation?
Thank you.
And it's one of my babies, right there. You keep grinding and doing what you do.
Yes, sir.
And I'm gonna give this to her. If you can put your contact information on there and then I'll give it to the city manager's office.
You all know I taught some great students, don't you? I brag on mine. I don't know what y'all do with y'alls, but if I taught them, I brag about them.
Kiana?
All right.
Kiana, are we meeting on Friday? All right.
All right.
With 9:00?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, I'm donating $5,000 to her sickle cell program and she's getting her check on Friday.
All right.
Our next speaker is Charlie Dimer and on deck is Ruth Plummer.
My name is Charlie Deemer. I live at 128 King Eider Court here in Daytona Beach. I drafted the letter from the Estates Neighborhood Association of Pelican Bay that was sent out to the commissioners, to the mayor and to the city manager regarding the issue of enacting an ordinance that would be entitled "Security for Real Estate Titles and Right to View." And I hope you've read that and I want to comment on that it's accurate. I double-checked some of the information on that letter two days ago and what I think is important to know is on this right-to-view issue, it deals with, of course, golf courses and the city of Palm Coast enacted a ordinance to allow the partial development of an existing golf course. It's the former Metanzas Woods Golf Course and it's the Lakewood Estates MPD ordinance, which was passed by Palm Coast, January of 2021. In there, they said there was a mandatory view protection zones and it cited part of the Palm Coast Development Code, which is section 3.03, da-da-da. Anyhow, it's titled "Existing Golf Course Communities" and in it, it says, "Existing direct golf course views from the rear yards of all existing planted lots within any residentially zoned districts directly abutting the site shall be maintained." So in other words, they're saying, once you have an existing golf course lot, that owner has a right to the view across the golf course. And you're probably aware that Mr. Jagger, the city attorney, sent you out a memo regarding that and he's absolutely correct that... that trying to enact this ordinance is not without controversy. But there's always restrictions under the law and I'd like to give you an example of how you, the commissioners and the mayor were able to deal with that. You had a major problem with the issue of people begging on busy city intersections. You were told, geez, there's a lot of laws on that. You got to be careful. Mr. Jagger, with the help of outside assistance, drafted an ordinance which is legal and resolved the problem. So what I'm asking the commissioners to do is to start the process of looking at an ordinance to, to safeguard titles to property and the right to view. If you look at the letter, I'm a former chief deputy county attorney in Minnesota and I'm retired, never practiced in Florida. But what we've got is, sorry, can I continue for 10 more seconds?
You can finish your last thought.
Okay. My last thought is what I'm requesting is that you take the necessary steps to direct the city attorney to jointly with myself and others, draft an ordinance that protects real estate, which adjoins golf courses from having their views and their open spaces diminished.
Mr. Deemer, your response to your letter was sent to the master HOA. You do have a meeting, I believe, tomorrow, so I'm sure Tom, Tom Mahagan will address you and your letter because we received a letter a week prior to that, that all responses that concern the master HOA, which is the golf course, will go to the master association. So you should have a response by Tom Mahagan.
Okay.
Mr. Jagger, would you like to say anything to that?
I think I pretty much addressed it in my response. I did not have, however, the reference to the Palm Coast ordinance and I was unable to locate that. So if you wouldn't mind emailing me the actual citation to the code?
Could I hand you it? It's got the, it's got the citation. Could I hand it to you?
Hand it to the clerk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I also would like to, I don't have $5,000, but I have 500 in my Bike Week fund to support the sickle cell initiative of Ms. Goodman.
Do you entertain a motion?
No, we'll just put it on the next, next meeting.
Okay. Our next speaker is Ruth Plummer and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Good evening. This is so scary being here. No, because I tell you, I was going to come here tonight because I know, and I was going to tell you how I got to Daytona. My telephone rang and it was this deep voice that's saying, is this Ms. Plummer? I say, yes. He said, this is Dr. Charles Cherry. I say, yes, sir. He said, um, do you know anything about men? I say, yes, I think so. I say, I have six sons and I work with men. He said, listen, I got a program here in Daytona. Two men have failed this program and I need for you to come to Daytona and take over this program. Do you think you could do it? I say, yes, sir. I believe I can. And so I came to Daytona because Dr. Cherry called me from Edgewater, Florida as a woman and told me to come here to Daytona and I landed over in the project on Rose Street to take over that program. So when I heard you talk, tonight I, God told me to come tonight. I had no idea. I wanted to tell you that Dr. Cherry's legacy is still living. When you see me, you see him. That's the only reason I'm in Daytona and everybody that's with me stand up. That's Dr. Cherry. That's his word because he called me here to do that. So I said, okay, I'll go and I'll talk. So when you said that and I, I say, boy, God, I'm glad I hear from you. And so I'm here to say that because I've had to fight for everything here that I worked for and he called me and asked me. So I want to know, how do I get grandfathered in? Because I should be. I came, I'm around town running around trying to keep a legacy going of, of somebody that called me Dr. Cherry and this legacy still live. I am 74 years old and I still carry what Dr. Cherry asked me to do and I will not let it go, but that's why I'm in Daytona. I have asked, begged, but I don't care. I'm going to make sure he's not here, but he can be for sure. He could say to me, well done, Ms. Plummer. You did a great job here in Daytona. So I just want y'all to know, he asked me to come and do this work and some of y'all have not respected what he asked me to do, but that's okay. I'm still living and I thank y'all so much.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson and on deck, oops, is John Nicholson.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 Key Street. I'm here tonight to let you all know that the library at City Avenue, that place needs to be paved. It's in deplorable conditions and the pavilion, pavilion also needs to be cleaned. It's full of bird crap. I was up there today and yesterday looking at it. We've been up here before to tell you about this. Nothing has been done to correct it. And also we need the people to have the access to use that pavilion like it was before you took office, Mr. Henry, you and the rest of them. We need that pavilion open to the public again so they could use it to have picnics and functions that, and at that facility. Also, I like to say that tonight I heard Ms. Reeves say your, your people, but you have not been, I got a call today from one of your constituents, Elizabeth Coleman, who live on Carlos Circle, and she's very concerned about the fact that during rain, hard rains, all those houses are flooded and full of water. And she's been addressing this and no one has listened. No one has had meetings with her. I haven't had a meeting. That yard down, you know, Key Street in the 200 block is still nine inches tall. It's getting worse and worse. We have no accessibility, no accountability from Zone Six Commissioner. We need you to step up and you're missing in action. We need you to do your work. So in Zone Six, there's a lot of speeding going on. I have addressed this at the Midtown Meeting and it has not been corrected. I had the speed bumps put up. It's gotten worse. They're throwing trash all over the streets. That needs to be corrected. Also, we need a light at that intersection. There's been so many accidents there. I've been living in my home. There's a homeowner for over 53 years and those accidents are happening. I hear crashes and I run to the corner. Not too long ago, somebody hit somebody and took off and they couldn't even catch the person. But I've addressed this with the police chief. I told him that they haven't sent anybody over there to catch these people. They're speeding up that road. They're going 40 and 50 miles an hour. So we need to get that fixed. Also, I would like to say that the decision that you made to give away our public property, I see you pulled it from the agenda tonight. I would like to see you correct this bad decision that you made during COVID. You had no business to take away our public property. And when I saw that you had did that, you need to do whatever it takes to correct it. You made a mistake and you need to fix it. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Kathy Washington.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. A couple of things. One, where are we on the parking studies for Beachside? It goes back 50 years to the 1980s. We've had three studies. None have been released. Memorial Day is coming not too far in the future. We had the studies because Beachside gets jam packed for Memorial Day. We need the studies. Secondly, what's on the agenda for the pop-up that happens on Memorial Day? They've had it the last three years. We also need information, where are we on the affordable housing study? We were doing an affordable housing study. Where are we in that bracket? With regard to the rezoning, I talked to the, one of the county attorneys, one of our neighboring city attorneys. The county has a 1% to 2% zone difference. The neighboring cities have 10% and apparently we're at 45% for one of our zones. They have to rezone once they hit 10%. One of our zones has been out of kilter and Bob's aware of it for the last several years by 45%. It should have been rezoned when Margaritaville went in and the big boom happened. So we really are behind the times on that. Question on Oak Ridge. I tried to get Jim's attention. Apparently we're using some of their 3 million to redo the corner of A1A in Oak Ridge. Where are we on that? It was supposed to have been done several months ago. We're using their funds that they put aside to redo that intersection. It really needs to be done and the traffic light needs to go in. Those people coming out of that hotel have no light. So they're turning left on that intersection at Oak Ridge into traffic. It's a dangerous situation that traffic light has got to go back in facing east. Trees, we need trees. It cools the earth. It provides oxygen. It's beautification. Can you really have to push that? The improvements that Miriam Gaby wants, there are five streets she's planning. Oak Ridge is a pits. If you go to that, it's terrible. She is pushing security, safety, but if you have attractiveness and we are a tourist town, you can't have ugly, pardon my French, crappy roadways because it looks terrible with all those signs. Go over the Oak Ridge Bridge and see there are 22 these huge, one, the other, four per block. It's way too much. And she wants, was 140?
You're talking about?
Bollards on each intersection? Way too many bollards. Okay.
Our next speaker is Kathy Washington and on deck is Randy Gray.
My subject for discussion this night in my three minutes is the Juneteenth Celebration. I'm here to talk about our budget, which we don't have one incorporated in the city. When I started with this about 20 years ago, we had a budget of $30,000. We're not in the budget and I'm asking members of the dais that have budgets, if you would please consider giving us donations. We've received donations from Commissioner May as well as Commissioner Strickland. We have ads, we have, we've solicited for major sponsors and we're coming along well, but there is a shortage of about 15,000 and the 15,000 that we need is for the Saturday activity, no, the Sunday activity. There's supposed to be a food truck and we're having problems with that because the person, the chairperson of that said he was asked to sign as a vendor, which he is not. So I'm really here asking because this is the largest Juneteenth Celebration in the state of Florida and we have people traveling from all over as well as, in fact, day before yesterday, I got two calls from Atlanta inquiring as to whether or not we were going to have it because we haven't had it the past two years. So I'm asking if you would just kindly consider donations for the Juneteenth Celebration. We have the banquet scheduled. We have 20 honorees. At the same time, we have the little miss and mister Juneteenth and the banquet will be held at Ember Riddle as the last one was. And then Saturday, the fun day in the park with horses and everything for the kids, but the big kids like myself, they have a pound cake contest and a number of other things. We're asking you all to come and attend. It's open to everyone. We just need your support, your financial support. Thank you.
You're budgeted, you're budgeted, aren't you, for 15,000 from the city?
Right.
But you're asking for Bike Week and 15,000 more? Or Bike Week funds, just funds from us for Bike Week money? That's normally what, is that what you're asking for?
I don't know anything about Bike Week, but I was asking for additional funds for Juneteenth and the responsibilities to make it a decent celebration.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I didn't have anything, no comments on Bike Week.
Well, I was just asking if you wanted the funds that we give out?
No.
For a donation?
No, I didn't. No.
Oh, you didn't ask for a donation?
No, I did ask for a donation. I did not specifically say where it would come from. I asked for your hearts and I asked for your dollars. Now, where it comes from?
Doesn't matter.
I'll say thank you. That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Our next speaker is Randy Gray and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Okay, I'm here once again, missing my Tortugas game. First of all, thank you guys for all your support and looking into this and moving forward to a later date where we can have a little more input in the outcome. And it's great that we can hear from, from everybody on both sides. I mean, we would really like to see it put back the way it once was. You know, when it all started, it was a bridge project that went out as fast as it came in and then allegedly it became a mechanism for vagrants to trespass. Went back through the records, I can't find any records of, you know, if somebody trespassed and there was vagrants near or in my backyard, first thing I'm going to do is call popo. I mean, that's usually what I do. I'm not going to go out there and try to take on the world. That's not how you do that. Call the proper authorities. So I can't find anything showing. Then when it was given away, he said, since we give it away, we'll take care of the vagrants ourself. We won't, city won't have to worry about the vagrants. We'll take care of that. The next thing is, you know, when it was given away, and this is record of the meeting, when it was given away, it's also noted, there were no public comments. Well, we weren't here. We couldn't comment. You know, how, how could we do that? You know, I, I just don't know why it should be anything different than what it was meant to be for the last 90 plus years. That's a long time and I can't, I can't see any issues down there. So, you know, all, all the, all the things that the adjacent owners want to give it back don't have a thing to do with the vagrant. And that was their original reason for wanting that, to keep vagrants out. There, there's not one, there's not one demand about any vagrancy, not one. So when you look at that, then the truth starts to come out as to what the actual reason for the abandonment and the application for was. You know, I'm the type of guy that, man, if you can make a positive out of a negative, that's me. I mean, I'm always trying to do that and, you know, so far, the only positive that I've got out of this is you guys got to meet me and I got to meet you and I'm, and I'm really happy for that. So, I mean, I'm sure you may not recognize because once we do this, we all look the same, but with, and I, true and got to meet, that, that's a good thing. Some stories together.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
I'm going to do my list a little bit backwards here, take care of the little stuff first. It's Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Yeah, first thing I'm going to tell you, this is for the benefit of our city clerk. The timer, I'd like to see it adjusted to where we're allowed to say our name and our address and then start the timer. address and then start the timer when we actually start our comments.
Just stop it for him so he can say his name.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, and I think it's important because, and it's helpful to you because people often don't say their name and their address like we're supposed to. So, those of us who are regulars here know that, people that come in, you know, just occasionally don't. Second small item I want to talk about, although it is kind of important, our city flag is in violation of federal code. The tallest flag in the room is to be the United States' flag. Then you have the state of Florida flag. The city, very proud of the city, but the flag isn't supposed to be that high. It's taller than the America. And yes, sometimes we feel that Daytona is better than the rest of America, but just that, that is a federal law. The other thing I want to talk about, of course, is the public land. Now, at the last minute, we finally got copies of this 11-page agreement that was drafted by the same attorneys that took it away from us to begin with. I find several things in this very heinous and very unacceptable. I find it unacceptable that this whole process is allowed to go through with a false application. And I've stated this over the last two years, it's very important. You all didn't know that it was a false application when you voted on it. When the previous city manager presented it to you and said, "It just goes right through." And when your attorney said, "Everything here is legal," okay, which I've heard several times, no, it isn't. And I think you've received letters to that effect. I have read Florida statute, it's in violation of that, and I have also read the city documents and it doesn't agree with that. It also doesn't agree with the comprehensive plan of the city. Now, the city staff, in the era of the previous city manager, a lot of stuff was rubber stamped for fear of losing their jobs. So, they did not go in depth on this particular application to find out, yes, it was in disagreement with the city comprehensive plan, which it was. And you weren't told all that. All that you've been told over the past two years with my three-minute rant. And I continue to support this because it's so very important to the citizens. For you citizens out there, hopefully that are watching this, I encourage you to get involved. And I do want to thank Commissioner Reed for recognizing this in the invocation today for the first responders, for us veterans and the rest of us. Freedom is not free. And the same thing with the citizens of Daytona. I think they should be recognized, especially the ones that are here, time in and time out. There's 72,000 citizens in this city. We, I'd like to see a few more of them out here. And I know the mayor has made that statement, "Passion and numbers win the day." Believe, believe me, the citizens on this Bridgeport Heights issue are going to come out in more numbers. We're going to come out with a whole lot more passion. And, you know, again, my prayer is that you do the right thing. And thank you also for, Ken, for his statement on the, you know, land because trees are important here in Daytona. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd and on deck is Steve Barnes. And the timer starts when you begin to speak.
Good afternoon. Patricia H. Hurd, 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm not going to take my whole three minutes, but I want you to know it has not been mentioned, so it was left for me to mention it. I have on navy blue tonight. She has on blue. You have on blue. And you have on blue. Everyone else around here might have on blue. Thank you for wearing it. We are in the process of celebrating National Police Week. Chief Jakari, will you please come out? Chief Jakari. I know. Well, I just want to take time, Pat Hurd, to say thank you for the work that you do Now, you are probably wondering, what can you do to celebrate? Come by my house, you'll see all the blue lights out there. Okay? Say thank you when you see a police officer. Wear blue throughout the week. Replace your porch lights with a blue one. Send a thank you note. Deliver lunch, deliver lunch or treats to your local police department. You might be receiving something from us, okay? Share a story about a positive law enforcement experience on social media. Attach a blue ribbon to your car, mailbox, whatever. Thank you, chief, for the work that you've done and all of the other chiefs, policemen, what have you. Thank you. Okay, 58 minutes, 58 seconds. A Midtown walk. I'm asking for a Midtown walk. I live in Old Newtown. Newtown. And it will never change, okay? And I'm going to say it again. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard is the worst I've seen in any city that I have been in, okay? If you come to go down there now, you'll see some of the things that I'm talking about. The speeding is terrible around the city. I wonder why we have white lines at the stop sign. People don't stop there. They slow down, look and keep going. Well, I know we're doing the best we can and I appreciate it, but double I. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service and I'll be looking forward to the walk in Newtown.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Steve Barnes and on deck is John Navara.
Steve Barnes, 701 North Wild Olive, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm a Marine Corps veteran and I need help. That's why I'm here. I'm being tortured. You may think that's funny, but I'm being tortured. Every Friday and Saturday night, boom, boom, boom. Somebody has a four-foot by four-foot subwoofer behind their business and they got it cranked up. So, the time that bass hits my house, it sounds like I'm living next to a bombing range. From 10 o'clock to 2:00 in the morning, non-stop, I'm taking two sleeping pills and sleeping with the TV on. The time Sunday comes, I'm a walking zombie. The elevator's working, but it's not going all the way up because I need my sleep. The business has a permit for outdoor speakers and they're abusing that system. They have speakers big enough to play Jackie Robinson's "Ball Field" and they've got it cranked up and from what I was told, their permit is to 12:00. They're booming me to 2:00 in the morning. It's time to pull their permit. I've tried everything to get some help on this and the system is failing me and I am at my wits' end. I need help. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Navara and on deck is Latoya Gregory.
Hi, I'm John Navara and I live at 168 Springwood Drive in Daytona Beach. I'm a teacher at Pine Ridge in Deltona and I raise two daughters here that are now in their twenties. I am a part of Faith and the Educational and Criminal Justice Committee through my church, Our Lady of Lords, and through Volusia United Educators. Both are members of Faith. On behalf of the 530 members from either Our Lady of Lords or Volusia United Educators, I want to thank Commissioners Strickland, May and Traeger for coming to the action on March 28th and publicly committing to working together to solve some serious criminal justice issues in our city. I want to let you know that I know from personal experience at my school, using restorative practices and diversion, children who commit minor offenses, it really does work. Statewide data collected since the inception of the civil citation program proves that it works. Sadly, there is a common misunderstanding that a civil citation is just a slap on the wrist and that an arrest bears more help, accountability and consequences for a child when, in reality, the opposite is true. Shockingly, in Daytona Beach, the state attorney only ends up charging and giving probation to 5% of the children that were eligible for a civil citation, but were instead arrested. An additional 15% of those cases were thrown away by the state attorney's office. This means that the state attorney thought the offense so minor that his office did not press charges. That 15% got no services, no punishment and no accountability like they would have if they had gotten a civil citation. Their only consequence, lifelong record. It makes more sense to issue a civil citation for two major reasons. A civil citation is more effective than an arrest. The recidivism rate or the rate of reoffending in Volusia County for a first time, civil citation is only 40%. The recidivism rate for juvenile detention in Florida is 44%. So, there is proof that civil citations are very effective. Civil citations are a better use of taxpayers' money because it costs $4,500 to process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Latoya Gregory and on deck is Sarah Metz.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Latoya Gregory. My address is 1070 North Libby Court, Daytona Beach, Florida. I am the president and founder of Purple Princess, Inc. It was on my vision board 2016 and it finally came to fruition last year in April. We have been operating for a year. I'm asking for funds. We basically been doing it, me with my other business, help of family members, my volunteers. People would see us on the streets. We did a road cleanup. We did four. We have our name on the street, George Ingram, in Ms. Paula Reed's zone and Ms. May's zone. We have our sign put up that we adopted a road. So, these ladies have been working. We fed the homeless in November. They did all that good stuff. We done Juneteenth. We taught them about that. When we didn't have it last year, we took it upon ourselves and we basically taught the young ladies. We don't have anywhere to meet. We feed them, we meet once a month from 9:00 to 12:00 and we feed them a lunch. Right now, we have no building. Orman was allowing us to come there and then I had a friend that was allowing me to pay her, but right now, we have nowhere to go. These ladies are asking me, "When are we going to meet?" We haven't met since February. I'm going to let them speak.
Hi, my name is Gabriela and we came here today to ask for help to get a building, for us to meet because we personally think it's, it's fun. Like, we new, we learn new things, we help community service, we, we like help each other, we just do new things, like, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jamia and I like Purple Princess. We need a new building because Purple Princess is, they teach us how to take care of ourself and how to do things the right way. And, yeah.
My name is Arby Curry and we love Purple Princess and we're shaping the minds of maturely girls to the excellence of empowerment.
All right.
Hi, my name is Jaleah and I think that we should start doing it again because we miss it and most of us, that's how we get new friends and stuff and they teach us about, if you like get bullied, just go report it and stuff like that. So, yeah.
I'll just say something real brief. I'm Nikisha Harris. I am the community relations liaison for the organization. I actually try to find a lot of things for the girls to do, but like they said, we haven't had anywhere to go. If you all can be so kind to help us out, the girls miss it and we also miss it as the councils as well. Thank you.
Is this a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Okay.
Latoya, tell us, come up and tell us how many girls you serve because I know you serve a lot of girls in the community.
Last year, we had 54. I had to turn them away. We had more than 54 because I had no funds. So, this year, I had 34 new girls apply, but I haven't been able to bring us in on top of the 54. Only one girl's graduating. The ages are from 5 to 16 and I like for the seniors to come back and volunteer, to get volunteer hours. So, I have one girl that's graduating, going to college. My goal is to give scholarships. I wanted to have a banquet for them this year, but I have no funds. I literally been taking my, because I'm an entrepreneur, my other business, I've been putting that money into Purple Princess. So, we need assistance, guys, because these ladies are calling me and they see me like, "When are we meeting?" And I'm like, "I have no place for us to go." I told Commissioner Henry, "I'm going to set up a tent and be outside if y'all don't help." Somebody got to come through for these ladies. So, 54 and 34 new ones. So, do the math.
Now, tell us, and I'm going to go over some things that I know that you do with the girls in your mentoring program. So, I know that they get etiquette training. I've seen the etiquette training and grace training. I know that they get training in giving back and community service. I know that you do a lot of educational training with them. They did have the math party to come as well. So, you do tutoring with the girls. I know you do lots of field trips with the girls and take them places. Is there anything else that I'm missing that, I know you do lots of projects, arts and crafts, teen pregnancy prevention?
Yeah, we had an HIV and hygiene workshop come through, all that good stuff, yes. And bullying and domestic violence. I did that for October and breast cancer. And they have been in the parades and then road cleanup. That's basically what we did in one year. April, the 24th was the year that we've been, that we started.
So, you're looking at 88 girls just for your next cycle?
Yes. And normally, to be honest, when we do meet on, we meet every Thursday, Saturday of the month from 9:00 to 12:00, about 30 will show up, you know, so all 80 don't, the third Saturday of each month, just once a month, from 9:00 to 12:00.
Does it sound like you said Thursday from 9:00 to 12:00?
No, no, Saturday, I'm sorry. And I want to also thank Ms. Paula Reed from last year because you did give us a donation.
You're going to get another.
So, I know what Latoya is doing in the community. Let me just say that upfront. I know what she's doing. I know what she's doing with the girls. I've just told you a little bit of what I've seen her do with the girls and I always think that we can't do the work ourselves. We have to partner with people like the Purple Princess Incorporated, 501, to do that work. And I asked her to come here tonight and to bring the girls so that the girls can tell you what they do. And as you can see, you know that they work with them on speaking because all of the girls have very good speaking skills. So, this is what we need in the community and I'm going to support, support it. I want to listen to the mayor's comments about what he thinks that we can do with the girls. They've called me several times because they just need a place, starting out, they need a place just to meet and they only meet that one Saturday out of the month. And I'm sure she probably may eventually need to do two Saturdays because you may have to split the girls up at some point or something.
Yeah, we have three different age groups. The Duchess are the smaller girls. Oh, you want to talk, tell it. You can talk. She's a Duchess, 5 to 8. The Junior Princess, the twins, 9 to 12. And then my Gabby here, 13 to 16. And like I said, I, when they're seniors, they have a lot going on, so I want them to just come back and do volunteer hours. That's why I ended at 16. Thank you.
Okay. We got to figure a way.
Yeah, we got to do something, please.
Let me say this and this is something that I've been thinking about. And Mr. Willis, is he still here?
No.
Oh, he's gone. Okay. Bet Ms. Goodman was listening. You know, I've been thinking about this a lot because... You know, I've been thinking about this a lot because there are some programs that I want to run through our centers, and some of them have to be done on Saturday. And what I've noticed is that we're not open on Saturday. YSG is not open on Saturday. The Midtown Center is not open on Saturday. Sunnyland is not open on Saturday. And that was my thought initially for this group actually was Sunnyland because it's a standalone facility, and it could accommodate what you do. So that, because we need to, as Commissioner said, and we've said this a long time, we have to partner with people who are willing to do the heavy lifting. Because the heavy lifting is meeting with the girls every month.
Month.
And then meeting with them in between to train them and to groom them and to chase behind them. That's the real heavy lifting. So we have to partner. So what I would like for you, because we're getting ready to go into strategic training, planning, we need you guys to tell us, you know, what it's gonna cost for us to open YSG and Midtown on Saturday. They're not open.
It says their hours are from 8:00 to 8:00 on Monday through Saturday, but I don't know.
I don't see them open on Saturday.
That's for rental.
That's for rental. They are not open, and we're not using those buildings on Saturday. So we need to figure out what it takes to open them on Saturday and to partner with groups like this so that they can be used in some additional capacities. Okay, so we want to talk about it in the retreat. And in the meantime, what does it cost for this group to have Sunnyland, you know, once a month on Saturday? So that we can try to figure out a funding mechanism so that we can support that, and then we'll see what we can do into the future. But we're gonna get this done right away.
Thank you.
And so you can plan a meeting at Sunnyland for the next three months, and I'll cover that out of my Bike Week funds. But we want to find a way so that this is something that we can work with you to partner on.
And I have a question. How do you get these girls?
I'm a social media crazy person. I post everything I do. Yeah.
Wow, because we've got programs for girls for deltas, and I'm telling you, it's, ooh.
It's a struggle.
It's a struggle.
Well, when I can't take them, I'm like, hey.
Yeah, please do.
Y'all can go, because I have to turn people away.
We don't have the 5 to 8, but the 9 to 16, we have two different categories. But I also want to bring to your attention, for the ones that are 13 to 16, if you heard tonight that I'm supporting a financial, a virtual financial workshop at Mount Carmel, if you provide me your information or an email, the application's out.
Is that, was it Laqueta? What's her name?
It's Laqueta, yes.
She sent me the information already, and I told her yet.
Please help your young ladies to go to that. It's role-playing at different ages. Like if you were a 40-year-old and you lived on your own, would you do this? So it gives them insight on what the future may hold, so please participate in that.
Will do, will do. Thank you.
And that's free.
As Mr. Mayor is gonna cover it for the next three months out of this Bike Week funds, but I know you need other funds to feed the girls and do that, so I'm going to give $500 to get you started out of my Bike Week funds to help you, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
I don't know if I have $500, but I'll give it.
Did our new fund?
I don't know what's left in my Bike Week funds.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, send them this, please.
Okay, thank you.
But you're gonna get some.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we thank you all so much.
So much, so much. Yes.
You're welcome, baby.
But thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, they're handful. We got a van, so that's a good thing.
Oh, good.
And yeah, they're handful.
Thank you.
So the mayor's gonna cover three months for?
Three months of the rental of Sunnyland. Sunnyland should be the most reasonable, and it's a standalone space.
Okay.
Okay, but then you just change it to where?
And then $500 from Commissioner Henry and $500 from Commissioner Reed.
If I have it.
If she has.
New money should be coming, though.
Soon, yes.
Bike Week, new Bike Week funds should be coming soon, right?
Soon, yeah, I think they should be coming soon.
Okay.
I'll check with finance and find out. Our next speaker is Sarah Metz, and on deck is Malcolm Williams.
Thank you, Sarah Metz, 444 Seabreeze Boulevard, Suite 900, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm here to speak on the Bridgeport Heights River Approach vacation that occurred in May of 2020. I believe all of you have received the emails that I've written over the past couple of days, so I'm not going to go into detail about some of the legal issues that I see with the settlement agreement. As most of you likely know, and if you don't, I am a civil litigation attorney here in Daytona Beach, so I do this type of thing for a living. And I believe that what's happening here is unfortunately, the staff has one side of this story, and we would like to see and make sure, and I applaud the commissioners for ensuring that you have both sides of the story. And when I say both sides, I mean the neighbors in Bridgeport Heights, Mr. Brown, Ms. Marjorie, everybody that you've heard speak to the issue from the public. And on the other side, unfortunately, are the adjacent owners who have a different opinion as to what should happen with the property. Obviously, everybody's gonna have a different opinion on that. But what I do applaud you for, and particularly those that I've had the opportunity to speak directly with, Ms. May, Mr. Strickland, and Ms. Traeger in the recent days, for having it removed from this agenda, the settlement and agreement, so that all of you can hear that we do know that you're working towards a resolution, and we, like you, want to see this resolved as quickly as possible. But just like there were issues with the actual vacation of the right-of-way from a legal standpoint, there are significant potential issues with the settlement agreement that was presented to you. So I applaud you for removing it and for then hearing from the other side of the spectrum as to what should happen on that property. Number one, and I think is very important for you to recognize, is that the action itself was supposed to be public hearing, was not public hearing, was supposed to be publicly noticed, and was not. And therefore, under Florida law that I've cited to you, is a void action. And in a court of law, when something is vacated as void, and in the DEC action, if it's vacated as void, it goes back to exactly what it was before this happened. If it's not void, then there are significant additional legal issues with potential eminent domain that the city has very rightly tried to avoid, and I very much agree with trying to avoid those. But the way to do that is to go through with the DEC action or to find a better resolution than the settlement agreement provides. So what I am asking for the commission to do is, and I heard Ms. Traeger speak to this, is to have a special meeting, perhaps even a workshop meeting, where all of you can hear from our legal position, I say our, I don't represent anybody but myself, but, to hear from our side of the story, and I can tell you what I think the legal position is that might be best. And we can have that discussion so that Mr. Traeger, Mr. Feacher, and any of the other city attorneys and I can discuss what we think might be the best way forward for not only the adjacent owners, but the public at large.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Malcolm Williams, and on deck, I believe, I don't catch the first name, last name is Stafford.
Good evening, everybody. Malcolm Williams, 1006 Libby Avenue. I don't have much today, kind of a spokesperson today. I want to invite everybody out to Zone 5 on July 9. West Side Apparel will be celebrating one year in business off of Third Street, and we have been an advocate for our small businesses in our neighborhood. So I just want to give an invite to the community at large to come out and help celebrate our small businesses in the area. Picking back off of Zone 5, I believe Sunnyland is going through renovations, so we can put the Purple Princess back in Zone 5 and at YSG. I think that'd be a great location for them if we could do that as well. I also want to invite everybody out to our next neighborhood meeting, June 6 at 6:30 PM at Living Faith World Ministry Church. We've invited Congressman Mike Waltz to be our guest speaker for that evening. Along with that, they will be celebrating and welcoming our new captain for the zone. We are excited about the changes in the police department. They have been great partners with us, and we are greatly happy for some of the changes and some of the efforts that have been taken, especially in Zone 5 and in Cedar Highlands to be direct. So we are excited about the new things to come in our neighborhood. I think that's all I got for today's. Thank you, guys. See y'all in a month.
Our next speaker is Inez Stafford, and on deck is Pedro Dash.
To our mayor and commissioners.
And I'm sorry, ma'am, if you'll put down the mic so they can...
To our mayor and commissioners, I thank you for allowing us to be here. Yes, I'll do that. My name is Inez Stafford, 1048 Arger Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'd like to just share a few words with you. There's a poem by Christina Rossetti that says, "For there is no need, no friend like a sister in calm or stormy weather, to cheer one on the tedious way, to fetch one if one goes astray, to lift one if one totters down, to strengthen while one stands." And I'm here because that's been our desire for the last 20-plus years, to help single homeless women find their way back into society. We've been able to serve those who've come knocking on our doors. We've been able to sustain ourselves for 20-plus years with funds from sororities, individual community members our mayor has contributed, and several other agencies. But we are now at the point where we need the help of many, and I consider you to be many. And so on behalf of Pastor Patricia Cadet and myself, we're here to ask for funds for our ministry, which is called Witness Women in Transition Now Establishing Support for Themselves. And we are in need, and we think that we are worthy of whatever funds we can receive from the city. We do have a meeting with the city manager and a portion of his staff next week, and we will continue to share our stories. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for what all you do.
Our next speaker is Pedro Dash, and on deck is Steve Miller.
Hello, my name is Pedro Dash. My address is 140 South Beach, Suite 207, Daytona Beach. I'm also the co-chair of Faith's Education and Criminal Justice Committee. Once again, I want to reiterate, thank the commissioners who came out to our Action Assembly, and wanted to update you that there was a report that you committed to send us, which would help us clarify the children getting civil citations in our district. We've not yet received that report. We have the opportunity, we have not either had the opportunity to meet with our police chief, I mean, after exhaustive efforts to do such, and we're frankly mystified why that's been an issue. Right now, we're only getting DJJ's side of what the civil citation situation is in Daytona Beach, and it's not pretty. You know, we're seeing, it seems from their side that black children are not getting civil citations like their white counterparts. That's what the numbers say to us. I reached out up to today and spoke to Dan Merythu, the chief probation officer, to see if the numbers are right. He assured me that the numbers are coming directly from law enforcement. We don't think that's right, and I want to really reiterate, we don't believe there's a racial issue in the police department in Daytona Beach at all. We think there's a process issue. We think there's something happening. We want to sit with the chief. We've been asking forever to sit with the chief. We've had numerous commitments for meetings, and it's not been happening. We would like to know, and with lack of that happening, we are reaching out to the commission and to our city manager to get us the information. And I believe that once we start the process out, we can see what's happening. And once again, I want, I mean, I really want to reiterate, we don't think there's a racial issue. We think there's probably a personality issue, you know, someone thinks that, you know, we don't like them, and that's not the case. I mean, I personally, and I know Faith has been very happy with some of the changes. The city has had a reputation of not being transparent and not communicating well in past groups. We believe that this is a chance for change, and we are asking to just get the opportunity to see those changes happen. And I know I've had, we've had meetings with many of you individually and with lots of promises, and it's not been happening. So I want us to recognize this is not an attack on the police department at all or the chief, and providing this report and us sitting down and working through this process, we think can solve some of the issues. So for Mr. Feacher, I know we've had this conversation before, and we just like to see some change. Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to call the chief up because I've had, I've had a meeting, but it was racial when I had the meeting with the group here. That's what I was told, but now you're saying it's not racial. I would, and I have talked to our sheriff, I have talked to our chief, so I would like to call our chief up to speak right now on this issue. Are you fine with that? Okay. Are we okay with that? Thank you.
And if I could respond to being racial, the numbers show racial tinge. I don't think we, the idea that there is a racial with us is not the case at all. The numbers show that there were 17 children who were arrested as opposed to given civil citations, all 17 were black. Now, that's a racial number. We don't think, we don't think that there's a racial tinge as far as the police department goes. We just think that there's a process problem like we said before. So the numbers show, the numbers don't look good, and we are asking for something to happen. I'm just responding.
Okay, yeah, well, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, and our final speaker tonight is Steve Miller.
Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street, beautiful Daytona Beach, Florida. A quick comment about Juneteenth. City management, we would love Juneteenth to partner with the Secret Sale Foundation on their Sunday celebration of Secret Sale weekend in the park. I think we had mentioned it to Keith about wanting to do a, the choirs to come out in the evening time to do something, but now I see that they're doing something, Mrs. Kiana and her group, we would love to work with them and make sure it's a big event and publicize it with the Juneteenth. And the last thing I want to talk about was my dear friend who passed Sunday, Big John. I don't know whether or not anybody mentioned Big John, but he was truly an icon. The newspaper stated to our community, and I don't know, and I like to think that my city manager is gonna have a resolution in the mayor for his passing at the Lady of Lords that's coming, is it Saturday? Yeah, Saturday. So I'm quite sure we will have a resolution from the city of Daytona Beach because he was such a major player for our community and the entire county. So I just want to acknowledge his passing, and we all going to miss him. He was a great community citizen, and he stayed on the case. In fact, Mr. Mary, I know that him and you had some differences in the days, but I know you all made up before he left this earth, and I'm happy to see that, and I was happy to see you at Tweedy's, Swedish Going-Away Ceremony as well. So again, I think this is the best, the best city on the planet of the earth. I think we have the best city manager, and in fact, I was on a program today, Mayor, and I heard Ken Hunt, he was on this national broadcast, and he talked so much about Daytona Beach. I was real proud of this community, and he mentioned you, and he mentioned Mr. Feacher, and he mentioned our police chief and what we all doing in the city of Daytona Beach. So he was a great, I thought he was a part of Chamber of Commerce, to be honest about it. But again, thank you, guys, and good night.
Thank you. Before I say good night, I would ask that we would have, go ahead.
Thank you. A little more about Big John. Whether you loved the guy or you hated the guy, he's gonna leave a big void here because, as you know, his, I guess, his counterpart, Mr. Burnier, passed away about a year ago. Now Big John's gone, we're not gonna have those pot stirrers on the radio for us to keep us informed about what's going on with the different view and to keep us, you know, up to date with the latest behind-the-scenes stuff, because I don't know anybody that can step in that have the connections that either of those two guys had. So there'll be a celebration of Big's life at 10:00 AM on Saturday at... at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday at Lady of Lords, if anybody would like to attend. And I'm sorry, I didn't say something about that when I first had my chance, but there you go.
Thank you. I would ask that we would send a letter of condolence. And I would also ask that we would send a floral arrangement if they're asking for something else in lieu, if it's to a charity that he had. In lieu of that, I would donate something from Bike Week Funds, not from the general fund, to that, whatever that is, if they're not asking for flowers. So, and in conclusion, as it relates to Big John, I think it was an accurate assessment. Big John was cantankerous and thorny. And in most of my political life, I thought of him as a complete turd. And he knows that. He knew that before he went to heaven, and it was a reciprocal policy because that was his, he was a shock analyst. So he said a lot of things to shock us. But what he came to understand over the years, he lived with a woman who he loved dearly. And night after night, I know that very often she worked on him because she, she was very, very fond of me. And so I didn't know that they dated for a long time. And then I would be out in public, and I'd see her and him, and I'd think, is she with him? And so she's kind of come over, and she talked to me, and ultimately, she would always tell me, he's, he's not as bad as you think he is. And I would say, okay. Not what I hear on the radio. But at any rate, it was really, she said, you and him have a lot more in common than you think. And I believe that because I listened to him very often, and I knew what he said. So I always often wondered, I said, why is this guy so disgruntled with me? Part of it was other factors. It was, some of it was your predecessor. Some of it was a part of my, my political heritage. But a lot of it was your predecessor. But I was always, and I told him, I said, I'm not the type of guy who's wired to, you know, although I'm in elected life, I'm not wired to try to get somebody to like me. I am who I am. And I don't make any apologies for that, but I do want to grow up and be a better person. And so she, in her infinite wisdom, she kept saying to me, and I didn't know she was sick, but she kept saying, you need to get to know him. You need to go on his show. You need to talk to him. And I kept thinking, did you hear what he said yesterday or the day before? I turned his show on, my son's riding in the backseat, and he's like, what's wrong with that guy? But when she passed, you know, I did attend her funeral because I respected her. And he appreciated that, and he expressed his gratitude, and we were truly on our way to a better understanding because he did express, he said, I think we have, he said, we do have more in common than I thought. And so I know several people let me know when he was on in hospice. I wasn't able to pay my final respects. But what I am able to say is that Ken said it best. It's not a, it's a, I mean, we just don't have it anymore. You know, and whether you like John or not, he didn't tell any, he gave out a lot of factual information on the radio. And that's just a fact. And that's why I was able to listen. Because he wasn't on the radio lying. Now, where it came to me, I often thought he omitted a lot of credence where certain things transpired. But if you operate in this sphere, you're not looking for any real credence. That is done in glory. But if you listen to what he said, and I can verify this, over and over and over and over again, he plainly told the truth. He studied, he read, and he didn't lie. And I always respected that. You know, and as a man and as a Christian, I don't always have to like you to respect you. And I did respect his ideologies, much of his approach. I consider myself to be, I try because my mother demanded civility and decency of tongue. So that was a part of the reason why I couldn't always, wasn't easy for me to come to terms with it. Because he, it made him a millionaire, made him a rich man. He was able to be crass and boisterous, and he was able to sell tires, and he was then able to be generous. Things that I probably will never be able to be because I try to tame my tongue. He didn't tame his tongue, but he certainly was a voice for the voiceless, and he was certainly one who cared deeply about those who were hopeless. And so for that, I'm eternally grateful, and I'm beyond grateful to Sweetie for helping us to find the level of reconciliation that we did find. And also for helping him to find some form of salvation, as he expressed. And so, to that end, I say good night to Daytona Beach, and good night to Big John, and hello to our chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to the commission. I know you're ready to go, but there's no way we could wrap up without, you know, allowing me this opportunity to respond to this faith organization and some of the foolishness that they're alleging is taking place. First off, to the three commissioners, I appreciate your support. You've been supportive since I've taken over as chief, and as far as I know, you've always been supportive of the police department. But with all due respect, I was very disappointed when you guys showed up at that faith meeting unprepared and misinformed. None of you bothered to request a copy of our policy. We have a policy in place that governs juvenile arrest procedures. We also have an MOU in place that was signed by my predecessor, Chief Capri, along with the state attorney, and along with the Department of Juvenile Justice. And we also have Florida State statute. And the police department is in line with all of those things. I'm not going to go through the entire policy, but just for the benefit of everybody, I want to read the first paragraph of the Daytona Beach policy governing juvenile arrest procedures. And it simply states that it should be the policy of the Daytona Beach Police Department to use the greatest possible discretion in dealing with juveniles and to participate in the juvenile criminal, in the juvenile civil citation program for Volusia County as provided herein. It is the department's preference to, that the arrests will be the last option in most cases. It shall further be the policy that all of the department components and personnel shall share in the responsibility of participating and supporting in the juvenile operations function. I brought backup with me tonight. She's standing over here to my right. That is Mrs. Young. And it was important for her to be here tonight because she is the one that is responsible for the process that Mr. Pedro Dash referenced in how the Daytona Beach Police Department manages and oversees the civil citation program. Also, it's important that I point out that this civil citation program is not mandatory. The state does not mandate that we participate in a civil citation program. So I think it speaks a lot to the city and the department that we've been on board with civil citations for years. We've been on board with issuing civil citations because the language is pretty clear that it's preferred, it's recommended, it's encouraged, but it's not mandated. But we do this anyway because we genuinely don't want to see juveniles in our city that don't deserve a permanent record to obtain a permanent record. I want to fast forward to an email that I received from Mr. Pedro Dash back on July 12th of last year. So it hasn't even been quite a year since I received this email. It says, "Dear Police Chief Young, I want to begin by expressing sincere concern and prayers for you and your fellow officers during this very difficult time. We also understand that you have some concerns about the DJJ dashboard and its accuracy. However, the April of 2021 numbers were recently released by DJJ, and they report that the city of Daytona Beach is at 93% usage of civil citations for first-time eligible offenders. This is a momentous achievement, and we want to congratulate you and your officers for that. With that being said, we really appreciate your leadership and would love to talk to you and your commanding staff to understand what caused the turnaround and see how we can use your expertise to duplicate these results around the county and state of Florida. We know that you have a lot on your plate right now, and we really want to thank you for your leadership and making this a priority." I want to point back to the date that they sent this email. They sent this email to me on July 12th of 2021. I think everybody remembers that we were dealing with Officer Rayna who was shot on June 23rd and subsequently passed away on August 17th. So no, I did not respond to Mr. Pedro Dash's email. But less than a year ago, in his own words, we were at 93% issuance of civil citations. Less than a year ago. Now, all of a sudden, the sky is falling. The sky is falling all of a sudden. So that shows you some of the discrepancy there. One of the statements that was made during Faith Assembly was that DBPD has a large racial disparity with regards to who it gives civil citations and who gets arrested for similar offenses. They indicated that 39 children were arrested when they could have received a civil citation and that the racial breakdown of those children were 27 black, 11 white, and one Hispanic. What Faith failed to mention was the fact that 71 juveniles received civil citations from DBPD last year. And of the 71, 47 were black, 22 were white, and 2 were Hispanics. So Faith claimed that black children are not being given the same opportunity as other children to receive civil citations is an outright lie. The overwhelming majority of civil citations that were issued in 2021 went to black children, and the exact percentage was 66%. So thank you, Commissioner Cantu, because I too was offended by those statements that they made. Personally offended because before I am the police chief, I'm a black husband and a black father, raising three black children. So for anybody to insinuate that I would lead this organization and allow them to disparagingly arrest any child of any race is absolutely ridiculous. So I too was offended by those statements. Now he comes up, then it's watered down. It's not as intense as it was during that, that meeting. But I'm going to have Ms. Young come up, and she can kind of elaborate further on the efforts that we take at this department to ensure that, number one, we participate and that our numbers are accurate.
And I'd like to add, there's something else I was told, too, that not, not one chief in Volusia County or the sheriff are responding to this faith group. So I don't know, what does that tell you? Something is going on.
Good evening. Tancy Young, crime analyst with Daytona Beach Police Department. And I'm responsible, as the chief said, for processing the civil citations that we receive from our officers. And I also work very closely with the juvenile coordinator for Volusia Sheriff's Office. I've been working in this capacity since Chief Capri was the chief, and I've attended meetings with him with the faith organization. And I can tell you personally that they have been made aware that the data that they are using from DJJ is flawed. We have expressed that to them on more than one occasion, and we actually have correspondence from DJJ acknowledging those flaws. Myself, and I said, the juvenile coordinator for the sheriff's office, we go back and forth with DJJ all the time, not trying to, you know, talk badly about them, but there are some issues there. And they've acknowledged that, and we're working together with them to try to rectify those issues. But I think for the faith organization to continuously use data that they know is incorrect to try and vilify the Daytona Beach Police Department and the Volusia Sheriff's Office, which we're the primary targets, it seems, in the county, I think it's wrong. And I think for them to insinuate that we are arresting African-Americans at a higher rate when we've given African-Americans more civil citations than any other race. And they also, during their assembly, encouraged people in attendance to be angry about that. I think that's irresponsible, and it's reckless, honestly. We take every effort that we can to ensure that every child who is eligible for civil citation receives it. However, officers do have discretion in certain scenarios. One of those being domestic violence issues. One of the examples that the faith organization gave during their assembly was, well, the domestic issues are just siblings that are fighting. That is not the case. We've had children who beat their parents or grandparents because they've had a cellphone taken away. One kid kicked and punched his mom because she told him to pick up trash off the floor. So in those scenarios, officers have discretion to go ahead and arrest that, that child. Another scenario would be sometimes, given the circumstances, the victim is adamant that they want to press charges. We've had kids beat up in school and the parent of the victim, and the victim are adamant that they want to pursue charges. And just like the police department have a responsibility to protect juvenile offenders' rights, they also have an obligation to protect the rights of juvenile victims. So I think the chief pretty much covered everything else. If you all have any questions for me or on that.
Before we leave, and I know we can get out of here earlier than 8:30 tonight, police work is difficult work. Let's just acknowledge that it's very stressful, it's very challenging, and it, it needs to be stated that we all want our juveniles to be protected. But I think that the fact that we have to encourage juvenile citations is a reason why we need to find a way to have community centers open on Saturday. Because a large part of what we are, we need to make sure that our young people are not out doing things that compel and put your police officer in a position where they have to make these sorts of decisions. And as one who works in a school, and I see children almost daily do things that, that you can't imagine that they do. You really can't imagine that they do. And while I know that they're children, I also really, and much of it alludes to what she said as it relates to, you know, fighting of one another or attacking adults and staff members and sending adults to the hospital. But I think we are, we are proud of you, we're proud of your department. But I think that the mentoring program that we saw tonight, all of that, all of those things are things that we need to support more of so that our young people will have greater outlets. And we can be prouder of them, and we don't have to feel some sort of angst about having to make hard decisions. Because sometimes, hard decisions have to be made, and they're not necessarily the wrong decisions. So let's keep on keeping on and keep getting on. Did you have anything else?
Just one last thing I wanted to add in reference to Officer... Discretion, I left this part out. That discretion also includes being able to take a kid home.